Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Public Monthly Meeting here at James Caldwell High School, 265 Westville Avenue in West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss -- no, because we're not an executive. The Board of Education meeting is being streamed live, but all community questions and comments are welcomed here in person. We are starting earlier than usual this evening because this first hour is strictly to introduce our new interim superintendent, Dr. Lydia Fernari. So we're going to do all of the business, the Pledge of Allegiance, the roll call, and then we'll get into the introductions. So, the Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Regular Public Monthly Meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress in Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger in Newark, New Jersey, and Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office located in the Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, and have been delivered to the clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and the township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you please take the roll?
Yes, Ms. DiMartini.
Here.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. Diambola.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
So we have four voting members present, and we have a quorum.
Great, can everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, are there any communications for the board this evening?
There were none.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to read my brief little statement and then I'm going to turn it over to the star of the hour, Dr. Fernari. Okay, so, "On behalf of the Board of Education, I am pleased to welcome Dr. Lydia Fernari as our new interim superintendent of schools. Dr. Fernari brings with her a deep commitment to educational excellence and more than 30 years of experience in public education, including leadership roles as superintendent, assistant superintendent, and principal. Her proven track record in curriculum development, student-centered innovation, and collaborative leadership reflects the values of our district. We are confident that Dr. Fernari's thoughtful and forward-thinking approach will guide our schools into a bright and promising future over the course of this next year. We look forward to the journey ahead this year with her under her new leadership." So can we have -- it's just a few of us here, in case anyone's open, can we have a round of applause for Dr. Fernari?
Good evening and thank you, Mrs. Grosso, thank you all the board members who are here, and those of you who are here with us in the audience this evening, and those of you who are participating on our livestream. So, my name is Dr. Fernari. I am a lifelong educator. I started teaching, don't laugh, in 1984. So it's a long, long time. I spent 14 years in the classroom as a teacher. I taught music and a few other things, but mainly I was a music educator in inner-city schools and in suburban schools prior to becoming an administrator. My first principalship was in Elizabeth, and I had the opportunity to become principal of a school that wasn't even built yet, which was very interesting. The building was being built and I was helping to build the curriculum and hire staff, and it was a unique situation that I think was probably one of the anchors to my learning and growing to be a better educator. From that point, I did some work at central office, mainly in the curriculum office. So, I've had the opportunity to work in large districts and small districts. When you talk about curriculum and instruction, it's everything from what teachers teach in the classroom, how teachers teach in the classroom, professional development, making sure that we're adhering to standards, but the main thing is making sure that students get what they need in a timely manner and that we grow with the times. So, really becoming immersed in what's important, not only to our families and our communities, but to our students in the future. And we always say in education that we're educating students for a world that is not quite there. We don't know what's going to happen in our children's future. So, we're educating children in order to be successful in a future that they're going to build. From the time that I spent as a principal and then as a central office administrator, at the very end of my career, I had the opportunity to be a superintendent in Franklin Lakes. I was there for four years and then retired. Obviously, because I'm here tonight, you can gather, I am a very bad retiree. I don't know how to retire. So, I retired officially in November of 2018, and by January of 2019, I was already doing my first interim superintendency, and I've been doing that work ever since. So, you know, one of the things that I grew up knowing in myself, in my family, in our family history, is that education was a very, very critical aspect of our lives. I have my grandmother, who was born in 1894, was a teacher. And she went to the College of St. Elizabeth's and was, thank you, she was a teacher of Latin and history. Her three daughters, my mother and her two sisters, were all teachers. And one of them married a teacher. And of my siblings, there are five of us, and several of us have, were educated as teachers. I made it my life's work. My daughter, who is, she swore to me, she says, "Mom, I am never going to teach." She is now an adjunct professor at Rowan University. So, it's kind of in our blood, and I'm just really thrilled that I get to be part of this school community for the year or so, that I'll be with you. I have three children. My youngest did his sophomore, junior, and senior years here at James Caldwell High School, and I have three nieces who went through the school system. I know this to be a wonderful school system. I live here. I've been a resident here for 15 years or so, and, you know, just the opportunity to be giving back to this community is really special to me. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of history of me, and if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, sure. So feel free if you have any questions, just wanted a time, I can call on you. And then, once we're done with the questions, we're going to just like kind of open up, there's refreshments in the back, just to be very informal. If no one has any questions, then we'll just allow like a mix-and-mingle situation, just for a few minutes for you to get to know. But does anyone have any questions they want to ask? Do you guys have a mic? That would be great. I can go around. Anybody have questions? Does anybody want to ask anything?
Yeah. I was saying, I think you're supposed to. Okay.
Sure. Hi, I'm Megan Thompson. I live at 46 Park Avenue, Caldwell. Welcome.
Thank you.
Unofficially, I guess, since you're not starting until July. Out of curiosity, and I know I did a little research on your history, my mother was a teacher for 34 years in Franklin Lakes, so you probably spent some time there with her. Curious in the year, what it is that you think that you can accomplish here as superintendent? That's a very short amount of time. Despite some of the accolades in the district, I think there's a lot of work to be done throughout the schools, especially at the elementary level, to prepare our students for middle school and high school.
Sure.
So I'm just curious, based on your past experience, what it is that you think that you'll be able to contribute in that short amount of time, and how you intend to do it? Will you welcome parents to meet with you in the beginning, for example?
Yeah. So, one of the things that I've learned in my, especially in my interim superintendent journey, is to be a student of the districts that I am working with. So, I make it my business to, in a very short period of time, get to know as much as I possibly can about the needs and the wants of the district that I will be working with. I've started to do some of that work. I have a few days that I'll be coming in to visit the schools and speak with some of the staff and the administration to get to know what they believe are important things. We will be doing some very pointed and purposeful meetings with parents. I mean, I'm a big fan of coming to PTA, PTO meetings, of working to have superintendent coffee chats, you know, once every month or two in each of the schools, because having an understanding of not only the staff and the student needs, but also what parents feel are important, is important, is, helps our work. What I have tried to do in each of the districts that I've come into as an interim superintendent is take a look at the goals and objectives of the school district. My first day is not your first day, you're living this. And so, it's my job to get on that train as it's running down the track, and to try and be as supportive and helpful as I can in not only making sure that the objectives are executed, but also, you know, kind of guiding through and saying, "Did we really plan for something that, you know, a couple of months down the road, isn't really what we were talking about?" You know, looking at things in a purposeful way so that we know that we're not, we're not working to achieve something that isn't as meaningful as we thought it might be. So, I hope that answers your question. I really want to try to honor the work that has gone on before my time here, and to help get that to a point where we feel like we've accomplished something moving forward. My job is really to prepare for the next long-term superintendent. And I like to hand over, I like to hand over a situation that is in better shape than when I found it, and I'm not saying that that's my work, that's everyone's work, working together. So again, making sure that it's done in a communal way. Okay.
Hi, so, I apologize that --
Just, just, your name's in there.
Madeline Brown, 13 Burgundy Road, Caldwell. So I apologize that I missed the beginning of your conversation, so if this was covered, again, I apologize. So I'm just, you're talking about your role here is to kind of pass it on to the next person. So, in this district, I'm a lifelong person in this district. We had a superintendent for a very long time, and then we had another superintendent for a long time, and he came from within the district. And then we had a superintendent for a brief time who had come from without, come from outside. So we're kind of in a flux period, in a period of change right now, as we're looking for someone else. So I hear what you're saying about handing it over, but do you see your role then in the next year to just keep status quo as everything, or do you see yourself being willing to listen and revisit things that have been decided maybe, or things that have been going on, and possibly make suggestions and changes?
Oh absolutely. So, yeah, and if I gave you the impression that I was just going to sit back and let things, that's not me. If you, and I know some of you have probably Googled everything I've ever done already. So, one of the things hopefully that you have learned about me is that I want to make sure that we are headed in the right direction, and not my right direction, but your right direction, with some support and ideas that maybe people haven't thought of because you're living it and, you know, I'm outside looking in, although I've been a resident here for many, many years. So, as far as listening and, you know, you don't listen to people and then put their ideas on a shelf somewhere. You listen to people and integrate that, those thoughts into the decision-making that comes forward. So as I said, this is not, you know, your history started long before my first day. And so, again, I need to listen and understand and help move forward, but in a way that's productive. The last thing we want to do is to make it, to make anyone feel as though we're stagnating. We want to make sure that if there are things that have been brought up that need to be revisited, or if there are things that are new from the outs, lots of outside influences influence what we do. So, maybe we need to adjust to adhere to some of the things that aren't even on our plate yet. So, I want to make sure that it doesn't, you won't feel like this is status quo. And as far as, you know, I have this open door policy, so if anyone has a question, you know, once we've gone through the regular chain of command, I'm very open to meeting with people, which is why, as I said before, I like to go to PTO meetings or PTA meetings. I enjoy having coffee chats with parents, coming to faculty meetings with staff members. So hopefully, I'll be seen as accessible, and the more I listen, the better I think I can serve the district. I hope that helps.
All right, so, um, I'll give this back to you. So, we're gonna go into Executive at 6:30, so between now and then, I'm gonna just, let everyone, there's refreshments in the back, feel free to walk around, we'll speak to Dr. Fernari privately if anyone else walks in, and then at 6:30 we'll turn, go to Executive and come back at seven, it is a voting meeting, okay? So, Dr. Thompson will not be there. Okay, so. Just, okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah. Recession, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, and if we could just recess the cameras, and we'll turn them on again at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to enter back into public session. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so just so everyone knows that the board met in public session at 5:30 PM this eve. What, oh, so I'm sorry.
All in favor of I?
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, motion carried. Excuse me.
Thank you. Sorry, we're just out of order tonight. But the board met in public session tonight at 5:30 PM here at James Caldwell High School in the cafeteria to introduce our new interim superintendent, Dr. Lydia Fenari. Dr. Fenari is sitting here in the front row, so if we could just give her a round of applause. And she will be joining the district beginning July 1st for the entire next year, July 1st through June 30th of 2026. When we take a brief break to take some pictures with the students who are here this evening, if anyone would like to come up and introduce themselves to Dr. Fenari and talk to her for a bit, please feel free. That's why she's here. And then at 6:30 PM, the board met an executive session in room 105 here at James Caldwell High School. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. So now we are back in public session at approximately 7:03 PM, and we are going to move forward with our Essex County Education Association essay contest. Is Mrs. Brock here? Hi, Mrs. Brock. Yay! Okay, as Mrs. Brock is coming to the microphone, I have been, a special request for Ms. Greenlee to speak to say some words about Mrs. Brock, so we want to do that. Go ahead, Karen.
So we just want to thank you and all of your colleagues for all of your help that you did to help ensure that the Caldwell Classic was such a success this weekend. The teachers really put on an incredible table for all the participants and supplied all of the snacks and beverages, and we know that you did a lot of shopping for that, and it was a lot of extra time, so we're very grateful and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brock.
Oh, you're welcome. It was my pleasure. We really, truly have a fun time seeing the kids, the teachers, and the parents out in the community, so my pleasure.
Thank you, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. Okay, so now we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Erica Brock, and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Washington Elementary School. I am also the chairperson of the Teachers Education Association's PEP Committee. PEP, which stands for Public Education Partnership, is a campaign that shares the successes of New Jersey's public schools while building community support and involvement. PEP programs aim to help increase community awareness of all the wonderful things happening in our public schools. In addition to recently supporting the Caldwell West Caldwell Education Foundation this past weekend at their annual 5K Run for Education, one of the other activities that we took part in this year was the Essex County PEP Essay Contest. Each grade level was given a themed topic to write about. This was our district's fourth year participating in the contest. I received numerous submissions from students at the elementary, middle, and high school grade levels. This year was our best participation to date, with 10 grade levels in total participating. Out of all of the districts in Essex County, Caldwell West Caldwell was one of the top winners, placing with one semifinalist and nine finalist winners, making it our best showcase since entering the contest. The topics for the contest were as follows. Grades 1 and 2, "I look forward to going to school because..." Grades 3 and 4, "What is your favorite part of the school day or year?" Grades 5 and 6, "Who was a person during your school years who has instilled pride in you?" Grades 7 and 8, "Why is it important to accept others for who they are?" Grades 9 and 11, "Looking back, who in your school career has had the biggest impact on your life?" And 12th grade, "You must do the thing you cannot do," is a quote by Eleanor Roosevelt, a former First Lady of the United States. Write a narrative about something you did that you didn't think you could do. I would like to start by acknowledging our semifinalist winner. She, along with three of her family members, are invited to a special after-hours night in July at the Turtleback Sioux. When I call her name, I will ask the student to please rise to receive her applause. Grover Cleveland Middle School, 8th grade, Anna Amelia Delgado. I would next like to acknowledge our, our, um, sorry, our finalist winners. They too, along with three of their family members, are invited to a special after-hours night in July at the Turtleback Sioux. They were also honored at the Friends of Education banquet last month and received a certificate and prize. I will now read the names of our finalist winners and ask them to please rise when their name is called to receive their applause. Third place, at Washington School in 2nd grade, Abigail Kerrigan. Second place in 3rd grade at Washington School is Abby Peralta. Third place, 4th grade at Washington School is Kaia Cleva. Receiving second place in 6th grade at Grover Cleveland Middle School is Caroline Cole. And receiving second place, 9th grade at James Caldwell High School, is Lila Shu. And now I'd like to acknowledge our first place winners. They also, along with three of their family members, are invited to a special after-hours night in July at the Turtleback Sioux and were honored at the Friends of Education banquet last month and received a certificate and prize. I will now call their names one at a time and ask them to come up and read their essay. 1st grade at Washington School is Annalee Peralta.
I look forward to going to school because I like to read a lot of books, and my favorite book is Piggy and Elephant. Also, I like that when I go to school, I could draw. I really love to draw in color, and art is my favorite subject in school. Also, in school, I can write and learn more new words and write little books. When I grow up, I want to be a famous artist, so I look forward to going to school to learn new things that help me to be a great artist.
Our 5th grade winner at Washington School, Madeline Rens. Unfortunately, she had another engagement that she had to be at, so I will read her essay on her behalf. "School is a place that I'm usually excited to go to. When I go to school, I feel proud that I am part of the community. Mrs. J, my 3rd grade teacher, was a very important teacher in my school life that instilled pride in me. She taught me a lot and prepared me for grades and challenges to come in the future. It makes me proud because all of the fun she had made learning, sorry, all of the fun she has made learning and how she comforted my classmates and I whenever we needed it. Mrs. J is a wonderful teacher and has 100% instilled pride in me over the years. One way Mrs. J has instilled pride in me is how she appreciated her students and comforts them at any moment. This instilled pride in me because I am now able to say, Mrs. Jakobczek was able to comfort me and my classmates. In times that were a little bit more difficult for us, she would be able to let us explain our feelings privately and let her know what is wrong. Mrs. J also had a unique and fun way of teaching. Whenever we were behaving well, or the entire class handed in their homework, or we answered a challenging question, she would give us a ticket. At the end of each month, we would get to shop and use our tickets as money for cool prizes. This encouraged me to want to learn more and participate to get extra tickets. This resulted in knowing all I needed to know for going into 4th grade. This makes me proud to have been in her class and being able to be prepared for challenges to come in the future. As you can now see, Mrs. Jakobczek, my 3rd grade teacher, was a very important person in my elementary school life that instilled lots of pride in me and forever will. She always has a positive attitude and mindset and hopes for the best for her students. She comforts my classmates and in any situation can always make me smile." In 11th grade at James Caldwell High School, Nora Shai.
When thinking about who in my school career has had the biggest impact on my life, one teacher instantly comes to mind, Mara Lincoln. Miss Lincoln was my 7th grade civics teacher who undeniably helped mold me into the person I am today. It was in her classroom that I discovered not only my love for history and government, but also my passion for leadership and political science. Before I even had her as a teacher, I was lucky enough to be a part of her advisory group and environmental club. During our monthly advisory meetings, she taught us life lessons and skills, such as the value of empathy, the power of perseverance, and the importance of service to others. Miss Lincoln's knowledge and love for the environment were expansive and contagious. She instilled within me a strong passion for our planet, clean energy, and sustainability. Miss Lincoln's positive impact on my life extended far beyond the classroom. She would often remind us, "Always let your heart tell your hands what to do." This simple yet powerful mantra was written across the top of her documents and frequently repeated, encouraging all of her students to live authentically and to act with purpose. Her endless support and guidance, I found myself stepping outside of my comfort zone, pursuing new opportunities, and becoming involved in community service projects. One of the most transformative experiences was working at Christine's Kitchen, a local soup kitchen that provides meals for those in need. Miss Lincoln's positive influence awakened a newfound passion for community service within me and encouraged me to seek out projects I'm passionate about. I continue to volunteer at Christine's Kitchen regularly, and I am always looking for new service opportunities. Additionally, Miss Lincoln's civics class sparked my interest in advocacy, leading me to join Mock Charlie in High School. It is here that I improved my public speaking skills and legal analysis, as well as beginning to prepare to one day pursue a career in law. Moreover, her encouragement led me to serve as a member of the New Jersey Division on Civil Rights Youth Ambassador Program, where I work to promote equality and justice in schools and society. Without Miss Lincoln's support, I may have never found these opportunities to channel my passions into action. Miss Lincoln's excitement for life and learning inspired me to chase after my goals and devote my energy to causes I'm passionate about. Throughout my middle school experience, she helped me realize that everyone has the potential to create positive change in the world. I owe discovering my love for political and environmental science to her and cannot wait to continue my educational journey and find new ways to give back to my community. Overall, throughout my school career, Miss Lincoln has had and continues to have the greatest positive impact on my life."
In 12th grade at James Caldwell High School, Garner Garing.
Last school year, an estimated 280,000 American students went on some form of exchange program. This represents less than 0.05% of all American students. Even more remarkably, only about 30,000 of those said students were able to participate in an exchange program during their high school career. I can proudly say that I am part of that 30,000. Thanks to the financial aid from Rotary International, a global nonprofit dedicated to uniting the world, I spent the entirety of my junior year in Denmark. This journey was no easy task. It required months of preparation. In September of 2022, just about a year before my exchange, I wrote a letter to my local Rotary Club, the Rotary Club of the Caldwell's, to ask about the possibility of becoming an exchange student. After three Zoom interviews, six application letters, a complicated visa process, 10 months of waiting, and signing over 30 different documents, I was ready, or at least I thought I was, to live in a new country for a year. My flight to Billings, Denmark, was scheduled for August 3rd with no return flight yet booked. As the day of departure approached, doubt crept in. I had always had a strong sense of adventure. I'm a Boy Scout, and I've done many multi-week backpacking trips and canoeing trips across North America, but this one felt different. Was I pushing my limits too far? But at this point, I had signed so many documents and my integrity was on the line. There was no turning back now. I packed everything I could fit into my two suitcases, and I boarded that flight. I still remember looking back at the Manhattan skyline as I flew out of JFK, and it seemed so distant. A place that had just been next to my home for years now was going to be more than 5,000 miles away. The reality of what I was doing had hit me hard, and I was about to spend the next year of my life in a completely foreign place, far from anything that was familiar. My first month in Denmark was overwhelming. New sights, sounds, and experiences bombarded me constantly. Different architecture, unfamiliar cultural norms, and the language barrier. It felt like I was living in a parallel world, where every interaction required just a little more focus and a little extra effort. I remember walking into my first day at a Danish high school and realizing something. I didn't know anybody. My classmates were all Danish, and I was the foreigner. I lived in a house with my new family, but we had met four weeks ago. It was disorienting, and for the first time, I truly felt out of my comfort zone. Yet, at that moment, I also realized how much I had already grown. I was doing something that I myself thought I couldn't, navigating a completely different culture and adapting to a completely new life. I learned the importance of pushing beyond what feels safe. It wasn't always easy, but every single day of that year, I embraced the challenge. It was not just about overcoming fear or discomfort, but getting to discover new parts of myself. My exchange year has become one of the most defining parts of my life, and it all started with the decision to embrace the unknown.
I just wanted to take another moment to congratulate all of the students who participated in the essay contest this year. They truly did an outstanding job, and I thoroughly enjoyed reading all of their essays. I look forward to next year, where I hope we can have another great year of student participation in the contest with even more essays for me to read and submit at the county level. Thank you.
So we're going to take a quick break so we could take pictures with the students, and if parents want to get, Mrs. Lincoln's here. If anyone wants to get pictures, we'll take a moment. And again, Dr. Fenari is here. If anyone would like to come up, introduce themselves. I'm sure she'd be happy to meet everybody. And one more thanks again, Mrs. Brock. Thank you so much for doing this. You put in so much time and effort, and I have to tell you, I know I speak on behalf of the board. This is one of the best nights of the year. It's so emotional listening to their voices, their stories, how they talk about their teachers, the impact you've had on their lives, and it really makes serving on the Board of Education so worth it and fulfilling, and what you all do for our kids every day is just amazing. So thank you again. Okay, so, and then one more thing before we break. Since we're taking pictures, let's get it out of the way now. Josiah down here has been our student representative. Normally, we have like one student, like we had Claire two years ago. This year, we had Cole, we had Josiah, we had Megan Pack for a little bit. Josiah's kind of been the constant. He's been here the most. This is his last meeting here. He is going to be attending NJIT in the fall, so that's giving a big round of applause. And Josiah, I have to tell you, I know from inside the walls of this high school, you are a force and a voice to be reckoned with in a positive way, and it is our hope that you share that force and that voice in the world because you're going to do amazing things.
Thank you so much.
So we're very proud of you. Okay, so we're going to take a picture with the students, and then Josiah, we're going to get a picture with you. Everyone else, just take a break. Oh, they came if they're freshmen. Yeah, we'll just take a quick break. Move on with the second half of the superintendent's report this evening, which is our architect. Drum roll, Peret Somjen Architects, and our superstar Greg Somjen. Is coming up to present the plans. Bye, Mrs. Waka. Greg is going to be revealing the plans for the revised fieldhouse. And I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
Okay. Shall we give everyone a chance to escape?
Yep. If everybody's here, we don't mind you staying. If you could just be a little quiet so Greg could start the presentation.
So based on all my three children being over 19 now, that brought back very fond memories, and I would pay anything to go back to those days. Sweet. They didn't talk back. They cuddled. All those good things. And Josiah, what is your major at NJIT?
Biology.
I forgive you.
I know it's a big, big architecture school.
It's a big architecture school. I was about to offer you an internship, except I don't have a biology program. All right. So I've been asked to come this evening to give an update on all that has happened since the referendum. And first, I think a special thank you to the board and to the community. Question one passed overwhelmingly, and the district has now been able to benefit from funding from the state and undertaking much-needed capital improvements at no additional cost to the taxpayer. And so I think that's an important acknowledgement to make. I think it's also important to note that we made several presentations, and the community also spoke loud and clear on question two. And so what the board decided to do after that referendum was re-engage us to talk about, okay, clearly, the community as a whole voted against the two-story proposal, but we did hear from a lot of supporters during the meetings and through various other channels that something is needed to address the outdated and insufficient Athletic Center slash Field House that exists today. So, the goals remained the same. The goal was to modernize an outdated facility, to bring it into code complacency, and to create facilities for both the men and women who attend Caldwell West Caldwell High School. Those are some images of the existing facility. I know the board has had many opportunities and opened houses, quote unquote, to allow people to walk through the building. If you have not had a chance, I think these two images sum it up pretty fairly. The project footprint will remain similar, in so much as this aerial view shows what exists today. There is a one-story, 3,000-square-foot fieldhouse that is located just towards the end of the track. The track and football field are a good point of reference, and then the softball and track and field events are in that larger grass area. The proposal would increase the footprint from 3,000 square feet to just over 7,000 square feet. By comparison, the blue planned picture represents the new footprint, and the red dotted line represents the old fieldhouse. You can see, we are adding a small parking area to be code compliant with ADA and a small retention area to address stormwater management issues. The plan is pretty straightforward, very similar to the one that was part of the original plan, minus all the other components that we presented before. So what you're looking at in plan, starting from left to right, the left area is a trainer's room that overlooks the track. It's a remote trainer's area that will complement the trainer's area that's in the building so that field athletes will have access to the trainer and not have to come all the way back to the high school to be taped or to get any kind of care that is needed. Moving across the plan, the first blue section are the men's side. It includes two team rooms, restroom facilities for the athletes, a coach's office, and requisite circulation space. In the middle in green are public restrooms for both men and women, as well as a family bathroom towards the back, and a small custodial closet in the front, and a lobby with a few water fountains. As we continue across the plan on the right, there is the women's side, which is the exact same as the men's side. So the women will now get two locker rooms, restrooms, and a coach's office. And again, for those that don't know, today, there are no female accommodations at all in the existing building. And then the last piece to this puzzle is the beige area, which represents storage so that each of the sports can store equipment and uniforms when they're out of season. This building, as I mentioned, is approximately 7,000 square feet. It represents about 50% of what was proposed before, and ultimately is almost an in-kind replacement with what is there today, with the exception that it's modernized, it's code compliant for barrier-free wheelchairs. The portajons will be done away with, and obviously, both male and female athletes will be accommodated. This is a proposed rendering of what that fieldhouse might look like. There is still a lot of design development to do post-referendum, but just to give a flavor of the space and the building, this is the rendering that's been prepared. The budget is about $8.5 million. This is 55% of the previous plan that, when we stepped back and listened to the community based on their vote, felt that this fell very much in line with what those who said they could support it would be willing to support. Just to touch on a couple of frequently asked questions that have happened before, is the Athletic Center just for football? And the answer is no. All of the physical education students, all of the athletes will get to use this during school and sporting events. Obviously, with only two team rooms for each, lockers will be assigned by the athletic director and the high school principal, but everyone can use the space for changing. Everyone can use the space for restrooms. Everyone can use the space to get out of inclement weather. Everyone can use the space for storage. The question about, okay, we're much more pleased with the cost of this proposal, but still, it seems to be a big number. And the answer is, it is. And you can't unfortunately compare a public project in the state of New Jersey with the work that we're accustomed to doing at our homes or privately. There are many, many requirements that have to be met, both legally and statutorily. That includes prevailing wage, which is the equivalent of union rates, as well as a host of paperwork and complacency that has to be met. The questions that we present to the community will be on the November ballot, which is the typical election ballot that the board has every year. There will be one question in addition to those that you are voting for on the board, and that is on Tuesday, November 4th during 2025, whenever the board identifies the window of hours that the election is typically open. That concludes my presentation for the new proposal for the Athletic Center at Caldwell West Caldwell High School.
Okay. Does anyone have, can we have the mic? Do we have a mic? I'll come around. Does anyone have questions?
Hi. I don't know. Is it on? Okay. So my name is Sharon Demeo-Mudis, and I live right next door to where we're going to build this. And I don't have, I understand we need an updated thing. I have four questions. One, what happened to the $2 million we were putting in on the first one? That you guys, I don't see that. What does the tax cost? So there are the two main questions. Can you answer them first before I?
I can. So the board still has the $2 million, and they are going to hold it in their capital reserve account because, as we know, even though our budget includes market escalation and other factors and contingencies, because there is somewhat of a volatile construction market these days, they felt the most conservative approach was present the numbers that the community that came out and presented to us felt they could support and keep that $2 million for this project if it's needed or if there is a spike in escalation or other capital projects that might be needed. So that's question number one answered. Question number two was?
The cost.
Cost.
The cost to taxpayers.
Senior moment. So we just finished up the budgeting and the design, so we haven't reconnected with the financial advisors yet. So that's going to be happening next. We're going to give them all the new numbers, and they are going to run their new projections, and that will be distributed on the website, through communications, through the board. So I'm going to say in the next few weeks, that should be available.
And just so I can direct this to you, I'm a little confused. So the last time we did this, we had several meetings. How many meetings have we had on this one? Is this the first one? This is the first one. And we're voting on this November 4th. Am I correct? The general election's the 10th?
No, that's the primary.
Okay, okay.
It's November 4th during the general election.
Okay. So my question is, why are we rushing this? The public really hasn't been presented with this. I just feel we went so much about this on the first round. Are we just trying to slide this through?
So I'll speak on the background. Is that your only question you want to?
No, you can go ahead.
Yeah, sure. So no, the answer is no. We're not, and Greg, if you want to jump in when I'm done, but we're not trying to slide it through. We spent almost a year on this project, plus time before that. We took in a lot of community feedback. We took in, Greg was here for multiple meetings above and beyond what we had paid him for, just out of the goodness of his heart to come here and answer questions. We feel that all the feedback we got came onto this design. So that's where we're at, and that's what we're going to stick with. The fieldhouse as it stands now is a safety hazard. It really is. So to continue to kick the can down the road is only, the prices are only going to continue to escalate, and we want to move on it as quickly as possible because, again, equity and safety, those are the two main things that the board is concerned with. Equity for the girls and safety of all the students. That building is not safe as it stands.
My concern is, and I understand, but when we did that last presentation, we were told, this is it. This is what we're doing. And now, we're in the 11th hour again. We're past the 11th hour, and we're changing this. I don't really think the public is, all the public of our district, is aware of what's going on. And I think they have a right to know. And I don't feel, I got to be honest with you, that you're doing due diligence to the people like me. And I understand, I'm not disagreeing with you, but when we talk about safety of the students, it took me how many years to get somebody to say, oh yeah, the kids could get hit walking. And I understand that, and it has been brought up many times. So I just feel, from where I am, it's kind of like the lights. We're going to tack it on, and we're going to push this through. And you're not asking the people, all the people. I mean, I understand about the fieldhouse. I do. But I don't think you have voiced this or shared this in the proper way.
I mean, we value your opinion, of course, but we're doing the best that we can. We are having meetings. We're posting on the website. But Sharon, this is the first one. It doesn't mean it's the only one. Right, but it's not going to be the only one. Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, the board has been working on this project for well over a year, engaged the coaches, the administrators, some community members during the process, and ultimately made a decision for which they are elected to present a two-story Athletic Center. That was vetted at several meetings, that you're aware of, and the feedback from those meetings, from those that attended and chose to voice their concerns, was some of them were supportive of the two stories, many would support a one-story in-kind replacement. Ultimately, the voters spoke, and the board said, okay, for the reasons Julianne stated, we don't want to put this off too much longer because prices are going to go up. The other reason is that doing this at the November election doesn't cost the board anything extra for a special election. So that means they would have had to wait another 18 months or pay for another special election because a referendum can only be presented one time, excuse me, out of five times in a year. January, March, September, December, or during the April or November election, whichever the board has. So there was a decision made that we heard the community, they don't want the two-story, but for those that took the time to come to the meetings and voice their concerns, they said an in-kind replacement to address those three goals would be something we can support. Now, come November, if everyone says, if the voters come out and say no, well then, I guess the fieldhouse will remain as it is until the board gathers their thoughts. And the goal was that they truly felt the best decision at the time was the two-story option, and they wanted the community to vote. That's why there was no backup plan per se. But we vetted a one-story option for months after we were brought on board, and ultimately, through the input and through the feedback, we developed a two-story design. So I would offer to you that this presentation is the first presentation of the new option, but does not represent a rush to judgment because there was feedback over the course of months as it relates to those that came out and what they would support.
Well, I agree with you.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I understand that. But my concern is, we are in May, in the middle of May, and we're going to vote in November, and I have to tell you, not all the public knows about this. And I haven't gotten any brochures. As a matter of fact, when we, that other thing, when we had the last vote, it was mailed out, in my opinion, late, because I've been around a long time, to let everybody know. Now granted, I know how the telephone works in West Caldwell Caldwell, but my concern is, one presentation, how many people? Because I know about it because I'm plugged in more than some others. We have seniors, and we want to know what the cost is. And my kids went to school here. What's the cost? And you're telling me, I don't know yet. We have to work that out. But we're going to vote for this in November.
But it's only May.
It's May. Oh, November? I'm sorry. Is it May? I'm sorry. My fault. May. You know what I'm thinking? I'm sorry. I am thinking about.
You're okay, Sharon. It's all right. I'm thinking, I'm like, she's so upset.
Because I really felt it was like, we're going to push this through.
No, no, no.
It's my fault. That's why I said June 10th, and you didn't correct me. I'm sorry, but I do hope.
You'll get to see me for six more months. How's that?
Well, you'll see me because, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I've been here 47 years. But I really hope, I really hope we can come to something. I have to say, I was happy to see you did something about the water because it is a huge problem, especially for where I live, and I'm right next door. You didn't have that in the last plan.
We did.
I didn't, we never talked about it because I did ask about the water, and nobody could answer that question. So that's a basin, but it was not discussed.
I may not have articulated it well enough, but I remember you asking the question. I remember answering the question, and all the graphics had the same because it's a statutory requirement. What you might recall is that when we talked about it, we talked about the fact that many of the water issues that are on that street don't have to do with our construction. They're coming from uphill.
Yes, I do.
And flooding some of the properties. We're going to manage the water on our property so it doesn't increase it, but we're downstream of you anyway.
Yes.
And those other issues are really not going to be created or worsened by our project.
And I do have another question. I know I'm a pain, but here we go. I'm concerned about the parking because, again, we do have an issue. Our children, I call them dead squirrels because they don't look when they cross the street, and they just walk. Where, I am concerned about the parking and being there. I know there's dead space between me, there's not much, but there is some. That will not be built on. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so I'm just making sure because I'm not.
And just to be clear, I want to be clear. We've moved the building a little bit further from your property. Not a lot, but we've given you, the trailer is going to go away, the storage trailer that's behind the building, and that area between the building and your property will not be built on. The area that is currently a gravel lot
Yes.
will be formalized. So we'll stripe it, we'll pave it, we'll be able to drain it more effectively. We'll put a handicap spot there. But we don't have the room because the board doesn't want to take over the softball and the track and field area to build a full parking lot. And you're right, that's one of the concerns and one of the general issues we heard during the last round that all high schools have because during a normal usage, parking is tight. During an activity, it becomes exponentially more complicated. Graduations, Friday night football games, and Graduations, Friday night football games, and so, there's not a huge improvement that's going to be made. We are going to clean up the lot that exists so it's a little more formalized, a little easier to park and clean up, but to your point, there is no extensive parking as part of this project because it triggers a whole host of other issues.
And there's no, we're not redoing the track, correct?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you for listening to me, I do appreciate it, but again-
November, six months.
You know what, I got nine months, I'm just on the primary, so it was really-
Coming in hot, that's okay.
It's good. Okay. Well, no, because I'm pretty accurate.
That's okay, that's fine, that's fine. Anyone else wanna ask a question? Happy to run the mic over. Anyone else? Anna Liz, anyone? No? Going once, okay.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry about the meeting.
That's okay, we're all human. No, that's, we look forward to your vote now. It's an easy quid pro quo, come on.
Okay, so no one has any other questions for Greg, so we will, once we get the tax numbers and everything, we will have Greg come back, we will continue to advertise, we will continue to have meetings and conversations.
Sometimes I don't see the advertising, but that's part of it.
Okay, yeah. We'll make sure it's very well, like, communicated, yeah, we definitely will.
I'm assuming the website is still up, so I'll update that. I will send more graphics so that communication continues.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to November, because the 10th, and the 10th kinda confusing.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, and just to clarify what Greg said, just so everyone knows, one of the other things that came from the other, what was, people were upset that we had a special election and we spent money on a special election. That's the other decision we made, because to his point, and thank you for reminding me, I couldn't remember the dates, but when you, when a school board wants to pose a question to the community, they can only do it in September, December, January, March, or at whatever election they're elected. So some school boards do an April school board election, others are looped into the general in November. Our school board election is in the general in November. It's at no cost to the taxpayers, it'll just be on your ballot. When you see your ballot, it'll be the government officials and then it'll be the school board and then there'll be a special question. Okay? So, that's also part of the reason we're putting it on in November, because we don't wanna wait and it's not gonna cost anybody anything.
I really thought the wait was-
Yes, I know, I know.
It's a date thing.
It's the date thing. It's also because it's, we're in primary mode and like the general and so we're saying, but that's it. So, okay, you're welcome, you're welcome. So, I'm gonna now look for a, that's the end of the superintendent's report, there's no president's report. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Nope.
Anybody? Nope? Okay, great. Then we'll move to the approval of minutes. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Brian, can you take the roll when you're ready?
Yes. Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy-Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Great. Now we're gonna move to public comments on the agenda only for right now, so public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or a cross-examination between the public and individual members. Please be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time or are objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. That being said, does anyone have anything they'd like to address to the board only on the agenda at this time? Liz.
Lower this, because I'm so short. Okay. Liz Hart, 149 Ravine. So, under finance, it's listed that there's a motion to reject all bids for Phase Two of the GCMS auditorium project. And so, I know, so I was at the, you know, the Frozen Junior Play this past weekend, which was amazing, and I happened to run into, I don't know what his name is, I apologize, like the head sound gentleman that runs everything, right, for the district. And I had commented to him, because I was standing in the back, because it was sold out, yay, that I couldn't really hear, right? So like, the music is really loud and then when, you know, the students are performing and they're singing, you can't, you can't hear them singing unfortunately, right? When the sound isn't going on, you can hear them and that's great. So seeing that this was rejected, is there a reason why it was rejected and will we be able to put this back?
So what, we'll let Brian. Brian, you wanna share what the happened?
Yeah, yes, hi Liz.
Hi.
So, we're just as disappointed to have to reject the bids as probably you are and you know the story and you talked about Mike Scolera, because I actually met with Mike last week. So when we originally put together the preliminary designs, we're thinking it would be maybe three to 400,000, 500,000. It came up higher than that, so we designed the bid specs to have base bids and four alternates that totaled about 850,000.
For the base bid?
No, for the, for the base bid plus the alternates. So it was a total of about 850,000, having everything done.
Oh, got it, okay.
We structured it with base and alternate bids just in case they did come in high and we wanted to just select maybe the base plus alter one up to all the alternates. And unfortunately, when we got all, when we got the bids, we only got two bids and they were approximately a million five, million six. So they came in, yeah, exactly, I said, well, the same thing too. So we're not, we're not taking it off the table forever.
Okay, right.
We have a market right now where, as Greg had alluded to, the pricing is not necessarily stable yet, so as, you know, we've had some market movements right now in pricing, we've seen in the paper. So hopefully, we can go back out to bid in the future and/or do something on our own to solve some of the things that we wanna put into school. So that's what happened and we just, it's too expensive for us to accept those bids.
Okay. Now, is there, would there be, and I don't have any, you know, my child is in high school now, but is there a thought to potentially move some of the performance to the high schools so then that way the kids, I mean, it was amazing, it was a sold-out show, maybe if it was, you know, at the high school, it would've been even sold out here, right? Just so that way their performance isn't impacted by like the sound-
Yeah.
That isn't 100% clear and, you know, the lighting, I mean, my son was the second row for like one of the shows and he said it was great, but I was like, all the people in the back, including me, like I couldn't hear and it's just such a shame, I know how hard those kids were, so.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think, Liz, like it's something to be brought up between like Music &amp; More and Mr. Bobish and the principal and Mr. Bertolo, because it's his building. But I don't think, I mean, I def, I don't think it's a bad idea, but it's more like an administration decision, not a board decision.
Okay.
Like, wherever they wanna do it, that's between the two high school principals and Music &amp; More and Mr. Bobish, because he's in charge of Miss M. So, that's a good conversation to bring up, like in your meetings with them.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I agree and I, like, listen, I mean, I sat in that auditorium all three days, as I knew you were there, two of the three, and the one thing I will say, and I don't mean to like toot our horn, but it's gorgeous. I mean, you could actually sit there and be comfortable and the board did that out of all capital reserve. Like, that wasn't physical. We, we redid that auditorium ourselves and it was wonderful and it really pains us, like I, I can, it's my OCD not to finish a project, but with the prices right now, like, just to Greg's point, like, we're holding on to the cap reserve because we don't know where escalations are gonna be and we have a nice, healthy capital reserve, but we wanna use it wisely and we wanna just let everything settle for a little bit, you know, before we start like just throwing it out at things. But it doesn't mean it's off our list or our radar. We definitely wanna make it better. And to your point, maybe if it, if it can't be better by the production next year, maybe the solution is to have them perform here, so. But again, that's gonna be an administrative decision.
Okay. And then, sorry, so can I just add a quick?
Yeah.
So, are there funds that are being, like earmarked for the Phase Two of the renovation of the auditorium?
I mean, that's Brian.
Or we, like, we can't do that, I don't know if that's-
No, we can't, we can't earmark capital reserve.
Right?
No, it's just there for now.
Right now, have we done that? No.
Okay.
No, I mean, it's too soon. We haven't had a discussion about that and it may be above the price point for the middle school, those kind, those numbers are above the price point, so we're still evaluating and we haven't really, really looked at what we can do next. It's too soon.
Okay.
Our first step was, this is too high for us.
Got it. Okay, sorry, I totally went over, but thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? Just agenda items only, just for right now. Then there'll be open public comment at the end. Anybody else? Okay. All right, then we're gonna close and this is a voting meeting, so we're gonna move forward, so we're gonna start with curriculum and technology.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A through F under curriculum and technology on this evening's agenda.
And can I have a second?
I'll second.
And Brian, can you take the roll?
Yes, Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy-Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Okay, personnel.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A through N under certificated staff and items A through H under non-certificated staff and personnel on this evening's agenda.
Great, and can I have a second?
I'll second.
And Brian, whenever you're ready.
Yes. Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy-Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Finance and facilities.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, motion to approve items A through V under finance and item A under facilities on this evening's agenda and a motion to add in a resolution W under finance to eliminate the position of assistant superintendent for reasons of economy and change in administrative organization of the district effective June 30th, 2025 in accordance with NJSA 18A:28-9.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on the addition of the resolutions from the board? Okay, with that, can I have a second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry. I'll second.
Okay, Brian, when you're ready.
Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy-Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. Diambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Okay, we have nothing under policy this evening, so that'll bring us back to open public comment. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards may use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or a cross-examination between the public and individual members. Please be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or their designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time or are objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. That being said, would anyone like to address the board on anything on or off the agenda? Yeah, Sharon? Yeah, yes, please.
Hi, my name is Sharon DeMayo-Mudis and I live at 231 Westville Avenue in West Caldwell. I was happy that we have an interim superintendent, however, I was very sad that we're gonna go through this process again, that the board was unable to find a suitable super, and not, no disrespect, but I was very sorry that we couldn't do that, especially with us voting on some big items. I was very disappointed in that.
Yeah, we were too. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Lucy. Um, and, oh, I'm sorry. Can Lucy come up?
Yeah.
Come on, Lucy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Lucy Sandor, Sun, Didgeridoo Forest Avenue.
Hi, I'm Nina and I'm the vice president.
Um, so, no use to say your address.
Oh, 61 Woodside, West Caldwell.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lucy Sandor and I wanted to introduce a student-run organization we're developing called Voluntine. We thought parents, teachers, and students would want to hear about our opportunities.
Hi, I'm the co-founder and vice president and in a minute, I'll explain to you like how you can help us in general.
Earlier this year, with Mr. Devlin and Ms. Martin's help, along with my advisors, Ms. Sarrow and Ms. Dimitri, I applied for a student service grant from the National Association of Secondary School Principals. I pitched them an idea to build a website and an app that would make it easier for younger teens to find community service opportunities outside of school. They awarded me the funds and I got to work bringing the idea to life. I recruited a couple of other students at GCHS to help me with design and building the system, including Nina, who is generous enough to come here tonight to help explain our project. We did a little research first to understand the best way to build the system. Mr. Bertolo at GCMS generously allowed me to visit and Mrs. Marx gave me time with a few of her service leadership classes. Through surveys and discussions, we found out that many students don't always know Through surveys and discussions, we found out that many students don't always know how to get started volunteering, and some don't know how to find organizations willing to accept volunteers under eighteen. We think that the Service Leadership Program Key Club and other school-run service clubs do amazing work, and we are not here to replace them. We are here to help everyone, especially students in our district trying to access opportunities all year long. Our website and app are places where any student in Caldwell, West Caldwell, or surrounding towns can find opportunities to volunteer. We research and communicate with local nonprofits to find accessible volunteering opportunities. Our system doubles as a place for organizations to find volunteers and get their mission out into the community.
So, our main goal right now is to have more interested students sign up. Summer's coming, and it's a great time to get hours done and get involved in community service. If you want to get involved or find out more information, we have a website, voluntee.net, and you can take a look. You can fill out a form to give us your information, and we will reach out when the system is ready to set up a profile. We're also looking to build the Voluntine team. If you know any adult or student, and they're interested in helping us maybe program for the app, or help run the organization further in another way, you can reach out to us at njvoluntee, all lowercase, at gmail dot com. Finally, do you know any organization or nonprofit that's willing to look for teen volunteers? We have found that there's a need for organizations willing to train middle school students who have a lot to offer. If you would like to be a partner organization or know a partner organization, you can head to our website and fill out a partner form or email us. The organization can be published onto our site, which students can browse and see. To wrap up, please remember, again, to visit our site and take a look. If you have any questions or want more information, you can email us at the previously stated email, and thank you for the Board of Education for letting us speak to you all this evening.
Of course, wait, can I, girls, can I ask you a question? So, can you just spell, is it V-O-L-U-N-T-I-N-E? It's Voluntee, am I writing that correctly?
Like, volunteer, but instead of an R, there's a B.
So, it's V.
Got it, Voluntee, like a teenager! Got it, got it, got it! That's awesome, how clever, okay. So, it's njvoluntee.com. Okay, good. Dot net.
That's our email. Our email is njvoluntee@gmail.com.
At gmail, at gmail.
And then the website is voluntee.net.
Voluntee.net, okay.
Thank you again, and we appreciate any help and support that you can give us.
That's amazing. Great, so, you know what I would do, girls? I would definitely email, I mean, Mr. Bertolo and Mr. Devlin, because you're in high school, I've been working with you, but I would definitely email Dr. Conklin, because maybe he can help you by putting it out in the virtual backpack, or by talking to the principal, like, you know, helping you advertise it, and helping ways for the teachers to communicate in the classrooms, and maybe, like, the coordinators of, like, Key Club and AHS, like, to get involved, right? I mean, is Josiah still here, right, Josiah? Do you have any, I mean, this is a good one for you, like, this is where you're most helpful. Like, to help them get kids on their app and their website, what do you think is, like, the best way to do it, being here in the building?
Um, I think maybe, like, a great first step is to get all the school clubs involved, because if you want, like, familiar, familiarity, that's how you say it, um, like, kids are going to, like, recognize those organizations first. Um, so, like, I'd say, like, FBLA, Key Club, like you mentioned, um, you get those local clubs on board first, and then, you, that way, you already have a good following, and then, once you get that, like, good base, then people are going to be like, oh, like, this is legit, this is, like, really cool, and then you're going to get more people to come, so it's just going to be, like, exponential growth. So, I think, start off small, like, start off, yeah, start off small in your lo, local community, and then that way, expand it to, like, where it's, like, you know, really big.
Yeah, that's great advice, Josiah. And also, too, those clubs will already have relationships, like, where they already do their community service hours, and then they can recommend you as, like, you're the hub, you know, and they're going to use you for their students to sign up, and they want the organization, so I think Josiah's advice is, is awesome. I think you should get working on that, because you're going to want to hit the students in September, because you're going to have all the incoming freshmen, right? Like, this is a bad time of year, the seniors are senioritis, right? Everyone's getting ready, thinking about the summer, but work with the advisors now, so you can attend their meetings right in the beginning of the year, and then get people on board.
And also, something else is definitely get in touch with Rotary, because they love things like that, um, and Rotary themselves have a lot of volunteer, like, opportunities and things they need help with, um, so you can get in touch with, like, the local club that we have here, they'd be, like, love, they love to help you out.
Yep, and even, um, the West Caldwell Environmental Club, like, Mr. Haas runs that, like, you should call the townships and say, like, what committees, township committees that you have that look for volunteer opportunities, and the environmental commissions in both town, Caldwell and West Caldwell, they're always looking to clean up parks, um, the Grover Cleveland Park Conservatory, like, these are, like, just think, like, very locally and small, to Josiah's point, right now, just within our own town, where students are volunteering, and go from there, but I, I think it's great. And anytime you want to come back and speak, this is the perfect time, the end of the board meeting, public comment, and please come back anyway, in the fall, and let us know how it's going, right? That would be awesome. But thank you, this is amazing, awesome job! Thank you so much. Thanks, Lucy, thanks, Nina, thank you. Okay, Madeline?
Hi, Madeline Round, 13 Berkenstein Road. I, I'm looking for a little clarification, and I don't know, maybe tonight's either not the night to do it, or really the night to do it. I think it was mentioned either at last meeting or the meeting before, when Liz read through the budget, that we were eliminating the position of the Assistant Superintendent. And then there was a lot of back and forth, because that was a personnel issue, or was it a budget issue, and could it be noted, could we discuss it, or could we not discuss it? And then tonight, there's five pages of personnel issues, and since this district, this board, whoever has chosen to not publicize these, which are allowed to be publicized, none of that is in here. So, I'm just looking for a little clarity on if we are eliminating the Assistant Superintendent position, and why, at this moment, that's our choice, when we do have a change in program and we're getting rid of that continuity. You've been talking at all the elementary schools, and one thing that really hit me was when we were at Lincoln, and Mr. Geyer was talking about the changes that occurred post-COVID. And that's really when our current Assistant Superintendent was brought on and really worked to unify all the elementary schools. And I can say, from the elementary school I was at, when we got to see what some of the others were doing, we were pretty surprised at, at the differences between the elementary schools. So, I feel that Ms. Jones, in her current position, and whether it was her or the current position, really came in and was able to unify that. And I do feel that we have moved forward in the last few years. So, I'm curious why the board has chosen to eliminate that position.
So, I... Prior to Ms. Jones coming, there was only ever a Superintendent of Schools and a Director, one Director of Curriculum Instruction. Then, when it was, remind me, I don't want to say his name, what was his name? The last assistant before Caitlin. Anyway, the last super, his name is escaping me, Cleppish, thank you, Chris, with all your years, he remembers, Scott. Um, when Scott Cleppish came, he was hired as a Director of Curriculum Instruction, and then Dr. Heineig promoted, or not promoted, changed his title to Assistant Superintendent. Prior to that, the Assistant Superintendent position didn't exist. Then Ms. Jones was hired. When Ms. Jones was hired, she then brought on a Director of Elementary Education, okay? Then, she then brought on a Director of Secondary Education. The structure of the budget allowed for that, at that amount, at that time. Since then, over the past five years, the budget for salaries and benefits of that department is upwards of half a million dollars. We have the benefit as the board, because we don't, when we do a budget, we don't plan for just next year, we're looking at the next five years. So, when we sit down to look at the budget with Brian, starting in December, the first thing we say, and we annoy him, is, we want a five-year projection. Show us what this budget's going to look like in five years. Looking at the budget in five years, cuts have to start to be made now, because the last thing we want to do is be one of the surrounding districts around us that are 4.5, $7 million in the hole, $9 million in the hole, laying off teachers, cutting instructional programs. We feel as a district that we eliminated one position, but we still have two very competent and strong Directors of Curriculum Instruction, one that specializes at the elementary level, and one that specializes at the secondary level. And the Superintendent should be the head of a curriculum instruction, they are the head instructional leader. So, that's part of the goal with the next Superintendent, and Dr. Fenari is very skilled in curriculum instruction, she was an Assistant Superintendent for many years, and that is her wheelhouse. That's why she was the candidate chosen right now, to transition us, so that there is not a gap with eliminating that position, and looking forward into the future for our permanent person, that is one, going to be one of the main requirements, is a very strong curriculum background. But Ms. Jacobs and Jamil, Ms. Abudin, I, I always say his name, I always, to call him Jamil, um, they're awesome, they're excellent, and we have no doubt that they're going to continue and to move the district forward and do the good work that they're doing.
Okay, so, that growth, we can attribute it, in addition, you're saying, to those, those two new positions?
To those two new positions, yeah, like, I like to say, like, you know, listen, we're a small district, right? Like, to have just one person in the role, it's a lot for one Director of Curriculum, to, to really specialize in it. Ms. Jones brought in two very competent Directors of Curriculum Instruction. The problem is, sometimes, really good people come on board, and then budgets get tight, and you have to say which position is the most expendable, and unfortunately, that's the one that we feel like is the most expendable at this time.
Can I ask a second question, then?
Sure.
Kind of on a tangent to that, but just, just because you mentioned cutting programs, then, and I wasn't going to ask this.
Yeah, we're not, which we're not, no, yeah.
But is going to the full inclusion, is that a way of cutting budget money? Because now you don't need the teachers, that would be the pullout resource as well.
No. The inclusion model is a direction that the district is taking, it's not a budgetary consideration. Like, like, moving to an inclusion model was, is the model that the board is supporting and moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
But that's not a budgetary issue.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah, go ahead, Liz.
Liz Hart, 149 Ravine. So, I have a question relating to the elimination, so is it an elimination of the role, or?
So, yeah, we, so we've dissolved the position. So, what that means, when you dissolve a position, is that up to, it's either upwards of seven or 10 years, I'm not sure, so please don't quote me, I'm not sure the legality of it, but once you dissolve a position as a board, that position is done. If you tried to bring that position back within seven to 10 years, I don't know, Dr. Fenari, do you know, is it seven or 10? Okay, but it's either seven or 10, I can be pretty confident it's one of those, seven or 10.
Okay.
That position would then have to be re-offered to the person who had previously held the position.
Okay.
So, again, the current structure of the district is one that we feel works. We have someone that specializes in K-5 and works with those teachers and those admin, and someone that specializes in 612 and works with those teacher and those admin. And then we feel that the Superintendent really should be having meetings with those two people, and then meetings with the admin, and the Superintendent should really be hands-on. A little bit, I'm going to tell you, like, this was purely a budgetary issue, but we could also see the effects of putting too much space between the Superintendent and the administration, it's not beneficial for the district either. You know, the Superintendent really needs to be hands-on in the district, they have to know what's going on curricularly and instructional-wise, and this just works out better, but purely us dissolving this at this point in time is for financial reasons. And that's because, again, unlike the public, we have the benefit of looking at the budget down the road, and, and that's something people probably don't think we do, but when we're building the budget, when Brian is building the budget and we're building it with him, we don't want to be reactionary, we don't want to be in an issue where these other districts are, where we're having to lay off a hundred teachers, because, oh my God, we're 4.5 million, and now we got to cut classroom teachers. We want to try to cut now and preserve the budgets, because it's getting tighter and tighter. You know, when you have salaries going up, upwards three and a half percent, and the, the tax levy is 2% and you can't go above it, it's hard to keep up with that, and Liz, you know, you're in, you, you get that. So, you know, we're trying to protect and preserve the classroom, you know, that's the programs, the teachers, anybody who touches a child, right? Anybody that directly impacts a child, that's who we're going to protect first, right? We're going to try to carve the fat around the outside, and so that's really what this is meant to do.
Okay. Thank you for explaining the dissolution, or whatever that word, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it is, you know, it's, it's, it's not an easy position, it's not something that we take, we're happy about, but it's just what we have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
That's okay.
I missed a couple of names.
That's all right.
I do have a question, you said we're going to an inclusion, so are we getting rid of resource room totally, or did I misunderstand something?
Yeah, so we've been in the inclusion model for the past few years, yeah.
Yes, I know that, but we've not, we have no more resource room, even in the elementary?
I mean, I'm going to tell you, I am not the administrator, the instructional leader of the district, I can't answer that, I'm so sorry, Dr. Conklin is not here, he would be able to answer that better. I can't tell you for sure definitively either way, Sharon, but please email him, I would email him, so he'll, he will respond to you, but he's just not here this evening.
No, I was just curious, because I knew we had resource room. Again, my children are out of school.
Yeah.
You know, but I didn't real, I knew we were in an inclusion model, I didn't realize that there was no more resource room, which...
That's not true.
I may have misunderstood, but I will...
Brian, can you, I mean, maybe Brian knows.
We do have resource rooms.
We do, okay, I was just, when you said it was just inclusion, I was just a little confused by what you said.
Yeah, so, excuse me, I didn't mean to confuse, I mean...
No, no, what it is, is, again, I don't have kids in elementary school, so I just wanted to clarify, we still do have the resource room, though, is that correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
That's why I wanted to make sure, thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Okay, now, I'm sorry, I need to clarify the elementary level. I believe at the last meeting, we were told there is no more resource room, there